I have a meeting to order and ask you to stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the October 20th County Commission Meeting. I would remind you to silence your cellphones. Meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Bender in the white folder. And if you need a listening device, Robert is in the front row and he could help you with that. But that will move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion second. Any additions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the county commission meetings from October 13, 2015. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Any corrections? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $277,185.88.
Pay the bills.
Motion.
Second.
And a second. Any comments? Commissioner Barth?
Madam Chair, today's bills include $63,000 to rounds construction on a highway project and $42,367 to southeast mental health, which if you subtract those two, our bills are pretty low this week.
Thank you, Commissioner Barth. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A is the auditor's account for the county treasurer as of September 30, 2015. Item B is register of deeds report of fees collected in September 2015, and those reports are on file at the auditor's office. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is a consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
Vote approve routine.
Is there a second?
Second.
No motion. A second on routine actions. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item B is consider a motion to approve the 2016 health and dental premiums. Carrie Deaver.
Good morning, Carrie Deaver from Human Resources. I'm pleased to bring you good news this morning. This is the time of the year that we look at our health insurance premiums for the upcoming year and our dental premiums as well. You recall from past years that we look at several different items. As a self-insured entity, when we're setting premiums, we consider what do we expect our claim cost to be? What are our administrative fees? Is there any claim fluctuation we're expecting? What do we need to have our minimum reserve levels at? This is piece, a part of the analysis for you. To give you some historical data, the first few lines give you some data from 2011 to 2014. And the bottom line under that green section gives you what we're anticipating our annualized cost will be for 2015. When I look at this, the thing that stands out to me is you'll notice that we're actually have experienced about a 10% reduction in health claim costs for 2015. Why that is? I think we have great partnerships with the care systems and we're very lucky to enjoy that. The reason for the dip, I think, is probably explained mostly by the cyclical nature of a lot of our health conditions. We've been lucky. We've had a really good year. And when you have that type of good year, you usually end in a good position. And when I'm projecting forward, that also impacts what I'm looking at for next year. So you can see that if I use our normal trend of about 7% for health claims, we would anticipate having about 2.5 for 2016. Our administrative fees, we're currently in a three-year contract with a 4% increase for each year, so we know that they'll go up by about 4%. Our stop loss is one of the items that a lot of the times at this point in the year, we're still waiting to hear. Because we've had a good year, we also have our stop loss renewal in, and I'm pleased to let you know that that's going to be not even 1%. So that's close to flat as well. Our prescription costs are trending a little higher. I looked at it in a couple different ways. I threw out high-low. I looked at straight averages. No matter what I'm doing, I'm coming out at about 15% when you're looking for a trend. Pharmacy admin's a little bit lower. When you consider all of that, we're looking about $4 million for those five components of our health plan for next year. The $100,000 represents our specific egg that we have. We don't always hit that, but just in case, I factor that in when we're setting our premiums. The 2047 and the 22,383 are anticipated Affordable Care Act related fees for 2016. If you total all those factors, we're coming out with anticipated costs of 4.2 million. The next line you'll notice are our anticipated revenues. That depends on enrollment each year. Enrollment right now is about 70% of our employees take our health insurance. That fluctuates, but if it were to stay flat, that's how much we would anticipate to take in next year with our current premium level. So we come out with a surplus. That's good news. And for that reason, I'm not recommending any type of health insurance increase for next year. But before we get too excited about the idea of a $300,000 surplus, I should remind you that that health claim projection is based off of this year's. And if we're a little bit more realistic and we looked at it from the 2014 ending amount, if we had a 3% to 4.4% increase from that, we'd be coming about flat. So I think we're sitting in a good position, and with that, I'm not recommending any type of increase for health insurance premiums. Dental's a little bit different story. I don't think it's really that bad story there either. A much more simpler analysis for the dental claims. Again, I'm giving you historical data, but if you look at the estimated 2016 claims and fees, you'll see that we're trending about 6% for claim increases. This year, we've had over 9% claim. But again, that tends to jump. It's almost every other year, we have a low increase, then a high increase, then a low increase. No anticipated increase for admin fees, so with that, we're expecting about $356,000 of costs for 2016. If we applied a 4% rate increase, we would have $357,000 coming in in revenue. So that's what my recommendation is. Sometimes when we say 4% increase, that seems like a lot. When you imply that or apply that to our premiums, we're looking at $5 for an annual increase for single only, so not a lot. Any questions on either one of those items?
Any questions for Carrie? Commissioner Kelly.
I just find it interesting that we're able to do this program with 0% increase in premiums this year. If you look out in the real world, that's not the way everybody else is operating, and I think it speaks well for the way we're administrating the program and the health improvement programs that you instituted throughout the year.
Thank you, and we're happy to be able to offer those, and undoubtedly, we believe that those are impacting it. I just want to say again, thanks to our partners with the Coalition and with the care systems, too. They've been very helpful and have helped us control costs as well.
Any other questions for Carrie? Need a motion on this?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to approve the health and dental premiums. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number B is consider a motion to approve a one-time lump sum. Whoops, I'm on the wrong one. Item C is consider a motion to approve the health and dental premium holidays.
This item is closely related to the first, of course. We were anticipating higher claim costs than we had. When we have higher expected costs than we actually experienced, we take an extra revenue. When we have extra revenue, our health fund reserve goes up. We want that reserve fund to be adequate to cover runout costs, so if we today said we're not going to offer insurance any longer, what would we have for administrative fees? How about claims have been incurred but not quite yet reported? All that factored in, I would like to see our reserve balance for 2015 at about 3.2 to 3.3. For 2016, I want to see it at about 3.3. Right now, we're at 3.6. So because we have that extra amount and because we're experiencing a good claim year, I'm asking for your support of at least one premium holiday in December. I would also like your discretion to go ahead and have a second if we're at 3.6 million in that health fund reserve in early December. One premium holiday has a cost of about 200,000, so if we're still sitting at that 3.6, we should be able to afford to have two premium holidays in December, but I want to wait and see where we're at at that point in time.
Other questions for Carrie? Is there a motion on the premium holidays?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the premium holidays with the discretion to let Carrie decide on a second one in December. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number D is consider a motion to approve a one-time lump sum payment for staff who have been at the maximum of the salary range since January 2015 or earlier.
What I'm asking for your consideration today is something that we discussed in the budget process earlier this year and did allocate funds to support. You recall that this is the second year of a two-year implementation of a change to our pay matrix, where we're holding the maximum of the range steady while we're increasing the base by removing one step. And because steps are 2.5% apart, our base wages are going up 2.5% each year, but the maximum are staying in place. Staff who are at the maximum of the range only receive a salary increase if the entire matrix shifts up. And because we haven't made that many adjustments over the past five to six years, and because we haven't adjusted at all for two years now running, I'd like your consideration of recognizing that some of those staff have gone several years with very nominal increases. What we proposed last year for this type of situation was very similar. What we did was a lump sum $500 payment in January to anybody who'd been topped out for a year or more. This year, what we discussed in budget was providing anybody who'd been topped out for one year, a $500 lump sum payment, but anybody who'd been topped out for two years or more, $7150. Again, it's a nominal amount. On average, it's around 1% for all the staff considered, has a cost of less than 22,000 including all the benefits, but at least it would be some recognition that we've had staff who've gone several years without an increase.
Are there any questions for Carrie on this? Is there a motion?
I have that motion.
A motion and a second to approve the one-time lump sum payment for staff who have been at the maximum salary range since 2015, January. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Carrie.
All right, thank you.
Item number six is applications for abatement. There are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. There are none. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. Jeff Barth.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's DPNO 85671 in the amount of $6,985.29. The applicant is requesting release from this with no payment from her. The lien is solely in the name of her husband. The customer, the couple was married at the time the lien was incurred, and they're currently married. The applicant is attempting to sell their home, and the lien was found during the title work in preparation for the closing scheduled for November 10. The sale price is $215,000. The applicant is requesting compromise only as it applies to the real property. The lien was incurred in 2014 for public defender services for the husband, who's currently incarcerated at the South Dakota Penitentiary. The applicant indicates she was not aware of the lien and needs to sell the home to pay off debts and create a sustainable economic situation for herself. In addition to the house, the applicant says claims assets of $10,000 in personal property, a leased vehicle, and $1,700 in cash and savings, an income of $38,000. Liabilities include a $25,000 line of credit to Wells Fargo, debts of $16,624 to Bank of America, and $18,000 to Home Depot. Other debts total approximately $5,800. The balance on the home is $16,000. Some of those debts were incurred at the time the husband was arrested and they were in the middle of a remodeling process. After meeting with commission staff, the applicant explained she does not have the resources to get divorced and she needs to sell the home. She wasn't aware of the lien and doesn't feel she should be responsible for her husband's legal expenses because this process has already been extremely difficult for herself and her family. So bottom line, that's the story. The applicant would like us to release the lien as regards to this property transaction in exchange for nothing. And the applicant is present, and Madam Chair, as you know, she can speak from where she is without identifying herself and without standing up. I've asked her to speak up so that we can hear her.
And you don't have to speak if you don't want to speak, but if there's anything you'd want to say at this time, this would be the opportunity for you to speak. I don't see that she wants to speak at this time, so.
Madam Chair, if I may, you know, the husband certainly was convicted of extremely serious crime and is sentenced to quite a lengthy term. When you're married, you are responsible for your husband's or spouse's debts as well, I believe, and perhaps I should defer to our state's attorney to comment on that. Kirsten, is that correct?
Yep. It is a duty to support your spouse under our laws.
And so I really don't, you know, there are a number of bills larger than ours, and apparently the idea is to pay off the Bank of America and pay off Home Depot, but not to pay us off, and I'm not in sympathy with that, and so barring any further discussion, I would make a motion to deny this request.
I have a motion to deny. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to deny. No discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. The lien was denied. It will stay the way it is. The lien will stand. Next on the list is opportunity for public comment. This is a time when if you want to speak about something that is not on our agenda today, you could get up and speak. We'll limit them to about five minutes. And I don't see any. So we will move on to regular business. Regular business. Item number 10 is consider an appeal of a decision by the Minnehaha County Planning Commission to deny conditional use permit number 15-61 to allow the construction of a reception hall on the property legally described as track three except H1 Crell Editions Southeast 1 Quarter, Southeast 1 Quarter, 36 Township 101 North Range 51 West Wall Lake Township. Kevin Huckman. Good morning, Kevin.
Yes, Kevin Huckman, County Planning Department. This is conditional use permit number 1561 to allow a reception hall as the property just legally described. The property is located three miles west of Sioux Falls and adjacent to Wild Water West Amusement Park. At the September 28 Planning Commission meeting, it was denied by the Planning Commission, and since then, the petitioner has appealed the decision to this body right here. The proposed site was recently rezoned to see one commercial, or at least most of the site. This was part of the petitioner's plan to change the site to this particular use of an event facility. This CUP application includes a site plan, a site narrative, a project, and a project narrative, and it describes out the site and the way they plan on running the operation. And this is the site plan. It does meet all the standards of the planning ordinance. The project narrative notes that they have a large barn-like event hall, that they plan on selling beer and wine, and the hours of operation will be between 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. or midnight. The Planning Commission heard this item on September 28. It was denied by the Planning Commission by a vote of 3 to 2, 3 in favor of denial and 2 against denial. At the meeting, several neighbors did speak, and concerns ranged from additional traffic to potential noise in the hours of operation, and I believe you'll be hearing some of that today as well. Let's go over some of the pictures. This is an overall view of the site. You can see that currently it's just a cornfield. There is a mostly vacated road or a non-used road on the east side of the site, and this is looking west from the driveway area. You can see a few farmsteads there. And then this is looking east, and this would be where the main traffic would come in and out of the proposed site plan, right past these residential houses here. This is looking from the Wild Water West parking lot across the drainage ditch, and most of the operational will be kind of on the hill in the back there on the south side of the property. And then this is looking from the driveway of Wild Water West, looking at the curve where the property does have a little bit of touching with the highway there. It was discussed in the meeting that it's unlikely that the petitioner will be able to attain access to the highway as there's limited access onto state highways, and they have access onto other roads. Go back to the site plan. Although it was denied, planning staff did include several conditions, and I will read those off as the planning recommendation. Number one, the property shall adhere to the submitted site plan and site plan narrative. Number two, no outside storage shall be allowed at any time. Number three, all outdoor lights shall be of shoebox style directing lights directly downward onto the property. Four, building permits are required for all buildings. Five, approval of access must be sought from the South Dakota DOT for access to the property from South Dakota Highway 17. Alternative access will require approval from the township that maintains 268th Street. Number six, if access is approved on the South Dakota Highway 17, then no public access shall be onto the property from 268th Street. Number seven, all applicable gravel driveways and parking areas shall have dust control product applied a minimum of once a year. In addition, the portion of 268th Street between South Dakota Highway 17 and any approved public driveway access to the facility shall have dust control product applied a minimum of once a year. Number eight, the hours of operation for the public will be between 8:00 a.m. and 12:00 a.m. midnight. Outdoor events and activities shall be limited to the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And number nine, event staff must be present at all events. The Minnehaha County Commission can uphold, deny, or amend the Planning Commission's decision to deny conditional use permit number 1561. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Kevin at this time? This is a public meeting, and so we will hear from the proponents, then the opponents, and then give the proponents an opportunity to rebuttal. Can I ask how many are going to speak on the proponent's side, the people in favor of this?
Can I ask a question to Kevin before we go on? Kevin, in item six, where, I'm sorry, item five, where there are access approval from the township, isn't there already access to that property on, I don't know if that north-south road is a township road?
Right now, there is a field access off of that, I believe it's off of that township or that vacant road there. But as you can see in the site plan, they are proposing a site access right about the middle of the parcel, which there is no access right there at the moment. So if that's the route that is going, that's where they.
And under what terms could the township deny that access? Do they have to have a reason?
It is my understanding that they have to allow a access onto the site. They would likely base their decision on how culverts, if it's going to block water moving, and where it's located.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, I go on here. Just one, two proponents that want to speak, and then how many people on the opponent want to speak? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Is there any chance you have a spokesperson for you? No. Okay, so nine people, so I'm going to ask you to limit your comments to no new information. So if your neighbor said, "I don't like the noise," then it doesn't do you any good to come up and say, "I don't like the noise." And we will give the proponents an opportunity to speak again when we're done. So with that, we'll start with proponents. And we will try to give equal time to one side as to the other side. So if these guys speak for 25 minutes, you guys will have 25 minutes on your side, so.
I don't think we're going to take 25 minutes, so.
Hopefully, it's not 25 minutes.
I know you guys have.
But if it is, it is.
You guys have heard from us before, and so I'm Amanda Nelson. This is my husband, Josh Nelson. We live at 204 Park Drive-In Lenox. You know, Kevin did a really good job at explaining the project. One item that I'd like to add is that we are going to be a year-round rental facility, fully air-conditioned and heated. We will comply with all the recommendations that Kevin had made, if those still stand, and ensure that we're good neighbors. After the project completion, I think that many of you will be surprised with the results of the facility. That'll be one of the most beautiful venues in the area. Surprisingly to us, at the planning meeting, we did have neighbors oppose the project. As you recall, at the first commissioner meeting, we did not have any opponents to the land rezoned. There are a few items that I would like to reiterate to the board prior to making a final decision. Now that the land is a commercial piece of the land, the question is, is this project good use for the land? We believe that the answer is yes, and I believe many of you also believed that at the time. The location for us is perfect for this venue proposed, as we are in an area that is already commercial use. We have Wild Water West Amusement Park. There's a gun-shooting range, which we didn't really know, right on the Wild West parking lot in the back, right actually in the back of our facility, and it looks like that's operational as well. There's gas stations and storage sheds in this area. The location is very close to Highway 17, and it's very easy for our guests to find us, as we're only three miles from Sioux Falls, straight from 57th Street and, you know, right on Highway 17. There's adequate land to support our project, to surround our buildings with trees and gardens, as that's our plan. Being three miles from Sioux Falls, if people travel from Highway 17, they'll pass three to four homes, actually three, but one is kind of across from the property. My husband and I were looking for land locations, and we looked at several. It was pretty much impossible to find this low of an impact at this distance from Sioux Falls. We have researched other venues like this and found that facilities like this are utilized 2% of weekdays, 33% of Fridays, 63% of Saturdays, and 7% of Sundays. This equates to 58 events per year, and we believe that this is a low impact, and we're not really talking about, you know, non-stop traffic levels all day long. We have had some concerns about the noise level. As Kevin recommended, any music will stop, outside music will stop after 9:00 p.m., and will be inside only. And if you think about, you know, going to a wedding like this, like, let's say, all occasions are a hotel here in town, as soon as those doors shut, I mean, the noises were very muffled, and we did check out all occasions just to see where we could hear the noise there, and 100 feet, you could not hear a single, you know, no noise. And we're competing with loudspeakers from Wild Water West, which you can actually hear, so, and they stay open till 8:00 p.m. So the nearest building to us, from our building to their home, is approximately 600 feet, which will be pretty much impossible to hear any noise from inside our facility. There have been many questions about the continued success of our project. Both of us are very financially strong, enough to support the project on our own without any use of investors, which is exactly how we want to do it. We have strong educational backgrounds, experience running our own and managing our own business. I have a very successful career, and we have strong credit backgrounds, all the attributes that make a successful business owner. And as you all know, Minnehaha County is in need of tax revenue. Small businesses like us are vital for the county to keep the growth we are experiencing. Entrepreneurs like us need your support. In summary, the reason we are here today, the site of this proposed project, is a good use for the already commercial land. I hope that each of you agree with us, and thank you for your time. Any questions?
Any questions for Amanda and her husband? None at this time.
Thank you.
Amanda. Okay, we will start with the opponents, and if you just want to come up one at a time, you have to state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Leanne Walters. I live at 46602, 268th Street, which is right adjacent to it. And you were asking about the access road. There's an abandoned highway behind our property, and the picture you showed is on our land. And it's, yeah, half of it. And so that was the picture that you had up there. And I have a petition signed by all of us that live out there, and I don't know who to give it to. And I have a letter here that addresses your Minnehaha envisioned 2035, which was your plan for the future of the rural areas. It is written by our neighbor, one of the Crowls, that still owns land out there. And she said, "I strongly object to land use." And she said, "I strongly object to land use permit 1561, as I feel it would be a negative impact on the future farming of my land. I do not make a lot of money from farming comparisons taxes I pay, but I feel the land may not be farmable due to the limited acres." Because they were, I think there was originally 60 acres and 20 are gone. And these women lived out of state and they ran out their land. And they're concerned that they're not going to have enough land left to farm. Farming is a beauty in, of itself, and to have the land naked would be unfortunate. Also, the presence of additional smoke and alcoholic beverages may present a danger to the surrounding area. One flickering cigarette could ignite and destroy valuable crops as well as residential properties. I think about that right now, the corner is just really dry. And if it went up, my house just happens to be 130 some years old, and that would, you know, what, the response time, we're not sure. Wayne Township discontinued their fire department, so I don't know if we rely on Hartford now, which would be a voluntary department. It would take a while to get there, and you have a house the age of mine, it wouldn't take long to go up. We've also reviewed Minnehaha Envision 2035 and feel that it should be denied under the Growth Management Section that refers to the impact on neighboring properties as well as agricultural production. This states the purpose is to protect, preserve, and promote the economic viability of farming operations. On page 41 of the Farming and Community Goals and Actions, Action 1.3, to prevent the development of conflicting neighborhood development by limiting commercial and industrial development to highway intersections and residential subdivisions in rural service areas. We have three townships involved in this small area. We have page 83, Future Land Use. Ag is recognized as an important part of economy and quality life. Page 90, Goals 1.3 and 1.4, provide for and encourage ongoing opportunities through public participation in planning and development process. This should incline, include township officials. Since this involves a gravel road that is maintained by Lincoln County, I am concerned that this has not been specifically addressed. Please be sure to read the following goals, as they may cover many of my concerns. Goal 2, points 2.4 and 2.5. Goal 3, 3.2, 3.6, and 4.5. Page 92, Goal 6.2, encourage and utilize local participation in planning in order to understand the needs and desires of residents and landowners. We would encourage the commissioners to re-read Envision 2035 for Minnehaha County prior to this meeting, as we feel it covers many of the concerns. Provide and encourage ongoing opportunities of public participation and developmental process. This should include township officials. Since this involves a gravel road that is maintained in Lincoln County, we are concerned that this has not been specifically addressed. Some more goals that they brought up, Goal 2, 2.4 and 2.5. Goal 3, 3.2, 3.6, and 4.5. And page 92, Goal 6.2, encourage and utilize local participation for planning in order to better understand the needs and desires of residents and owners. So that addresses evidently this was adopted by you guys in June of this year. And it looks like it's just kind of out the window. And that's about all I have to say, because there are other people at a lot of other points.
Any questions for Mrs. Walters? Okay, thank you. And you have to give your name and, name and address, please, sir.
I'm Kirk Walters, 46602 268th Street. My main concern on this is that we do live just east of the property. That roadbed that you saw there has been abandoned, and we own half of that, as do the Dabiniacs that live straight north of us. So that's, that'd be difficult to get an approach in there with only half an approach, so. My concern is, number one, traffic. My front porch is 123 feet from 268th Street. Now, depending on how many cars you're talking about, but if they have spots for 90 cars in their parking lot, there's 90 cars in, 90 cars out, that's 180 cars. On a weekend, that's 360 cars. That's a lot of cars 123 feet away from my front door. I just don't, that's not what I move the country for, is to watch traffic go by my house all the time. So that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. Any questions for Mr. Walters?
Which, which house was yours? Was it the...
Pardon me?
Which house was yours?
Straight east of the property.
Is that that one on the map that says right by the Stapleton?
That's the one with that, we saw the big garage right there on the road, that's, that's my property.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next person.
Good morning. My name's Brian Brody. My name is Brian Brody.
Okay, thank you.
I live at 26791 Country Acres Drive. My property is directly across the highway from the proposed event center. I don't know why we're considering this for appeal. This is a pretty quiet residential area. Safety has been discussed. This intersection enters on a S curve on a highway that has a speed limit of 65 miles an hour. This is not a county highway, and the speed limit will not probably be changed, it won't be lowered. Due to the geographical area, the north and south distance for vision of traffic coming on is very short. After hours, when bars close, traffic will avoid the paved roads because they are more heavily policed and will probably take the gravel road, which is 268th Street. Traveling east, there's approximately three miles of rural road that has, of course, been treated for dust control, but the added traffic is going to have an effect on the wear on that road. We're going to, of course, see more trash, a little bit more of a, probably a danger to the native, people that, neighbors that live along that road. No similar business like this has been built in a rural area next to a residential area. We have approximately 70 homes that will be affected. I don't know if any of the commissioners have visited this site, but there are quite a few homes that are, are going to be influenced by the, by the traffic. Commissioner Barth, you had mentioned at our last meeting that this would be new to us, we're resistant to change. I challenge you to put an event center in your backyard. The event center will have no noise ordinance as the city would. They have a 10 o'clock curfew. Outside music versus inside music. The issue here is that some sounds do not stop, low-frequency vibrations. Just to make an example, a young man passing your house in a car with subwoofers, that sound is going to travel through the walls of this building and into our areas. That's not going to be controllable. We have nothing to fall back on. There, there's nothing that we can say if the sound affects our life. The number of acres being purchased is way more than what this facility probably needs. I can only surmise that if it does well, it's going to also expand, which is going to be an increase in traffic again. At the last commission meeting, a comment was brought up that this is very similar to the event center in T, and I beg to differ. The speed limit that the people would be entering into from that would be 35 miles an hour. The other fact is that it's completely surrounded by commercial businesses, there's no residential there at all. It has no effect for noise or anything for any residents. There's going to probably be an additional cost to the taxpayer for the excess traffic that would follow 268th Street into Sioux Falls on that, that which is gravel. There's additional homeowners that live on that gravel road in that three-mile stretch. There, again, they're going to have to deal with the, the, the noise also. And I got to say that all of the homeowners out here expressed the same feeling. We moved about five miles out of town to raise our families in a quiet neighborhood. Wild Water West has grown, but at sunset, their doors are locked, they go home. This community center would continue on till late in the night, and again, it's going to change our, our, our surrounding, and it is going to have an effect on us. There are no hotels close by. I know that they have offered that they will give shuttle service to people. A lot of people that consume alcohol are going to need possibly a place to stay that are not able to drive. I don't know how many people that they're going to be able to shuttle back to their hotels in Sioux Falls or to their homes. If they've got 80 people out there and 80 people need a ride, I don't know how big their bus is that they would actually be able to transport that many people. If you haven't lived in the country, you don't know the beauty of the country. We don't want our solitude taken away, and that, that's what I have to say to you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brody. Are there any questions? Okay.
Thanks.
Next person.
Dennis Dabiniak, I live at 26787 466th Avenue. I'm going to be real short. That proposal, like Mr. Walters was saying, that's my property directly east of this, that access road. I own that property up to the middle of that access road. Everything's pretty much been covered. I applied to the zoning commission to have it rezoned to commercial in 2004 or, or '05, and I was denied. We fought it and denied again, and the reason being that they felt there was enough commercial businesses, being Wild Water West, Second Chance, and Pump &amp; Pack. They felt that was about the limit that they wanted to go further south to rezone it, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Dabiniak? Thank you. Next one.
Good morning. My name is Chris Laird. I live at 46578 268th Street. That's okay, you can leave. Will I be able to use the phone or, or show the difference? The issues that I would like to cover would be the road issues and the road quality concerns. There are three townships that are involved in this. It's the Wall Lake Township, Dela Prey Township, and the Wayne Township. Right now, Lincoln County or the Dela Prey Township is who takes care of our roads right now. They take care of the grading, they take care of the snow removal. I have talked to all three townships, and none have heard of the rezoning of the property in regards to another access entrance to 268th Street yet. I talked with Wayne Township Road Superintendent and the Treasurer, and both shared concerns about increased traffic on 268th Street east of Highway 17. A traffic study was done by the township last year, and the traffic count was 400 vehicles per day. In comparison, the superintendent thought it was possible our site of 268th Street west of Highway 17 has about a quarter to one-third of the traffic, 100 to 130 cars of their study that they, they had done last year. With the increased traffic, until a study is done, it could increase our traffic on our road by 50% or maybe even higher during the summer months with weddings being in full swing. 57th Street turning into 268th Street is still used as a main exit road for the late-night crowd not wanting to be monitored on their way home. Posted speed limits are not adhered to, and responses to requests for monitoring by the Sheriff's Department are very minimal. Due to the minimal monitoring, speed limit signs have been used as targets and have multiple holes in them, so it is hard to read the signs during the day, much less at night. And the speed limit signs have been replaced numerous times, only to have holes shot in them again. Magnesium-calcium is applied on the road for dust control for the residents in the Country Acres area. It is applied at least once a year, depending on how much rain we get, determining, determines if more applications are needed. During this last year, Wayne Township has spent $12,000 in the dust control, as well as another $20,000 for the new gravel application on just a two-and-a-half-mile length. One and a quarter of the miles is 268th Street that is, turns into 268th Street from 57th Street, and a quarter mile of 467th Street going north. When that magnesium is sprayed, the road grader no longer is able to grade the road. He basically puts the blade on the road and just moves the gravel around. There is no depth control whatsoever. When potholes appear, and they are inevitable, as they show right now on 268th Street, there is no way of grading them out as the magnesium and gravel bond together somewhat like concrete. This is when the additional gravel needs to be added, so more magnesium can be added to keep the dust control in check. Thus starts the vicious cycle. Talking with Wall Lake Township Road Superintendent, some of the same concerns were brought up as stated previously by Wayne Township. It was stated that Wall Lake Township did not have money to pay for dust control, so the residents would have to pay for it themselves. I talked with the Dela Prey Road Grader, and he stated, "Our road is very hard and compact, and grading is only done after rains. If dust control is applied, the road will no longer be gradable." Basically, the blade will be lowered to the depth of the road, and the gravel will be just pushed around. The extra bit of information, food for thought, that was brought up was with the magnesium-calcium being used year-round, our vehicles will rust quicker, our garage floors will pit quicker, as well as the concrete driveways we will be parking our vehicles on. At the last planning and zoning meeting attended, resident Noah Hodak asked to have a traffic study be conducted, and no response was given. Because we believe the request was valid, I called the Minnehaha County Highway Department to ask for a road study to be done on 268th Street west of Highway 17. I was told the request had to come from the township. I called Wall Lake Township and asked to have the request, have a request for a traffic study be done. I was informed it had to be put on the town's agenda, which it has been, and we will go forth from there. However, we are still at the mercy of the Minnehaha County Commissioners. Access to Highway 17, Amanda and Josh had made mention that they were going to request or fill out an application with the DOT requesting access to Highway 17. Understandably, there was some talk that it possibly wouldn't be very, a very good idea. However, when I called the South Dakota DOT East River and asked some questions, it was brought up that yes, only five access points are granted per mile section. However, on our section alone, 268th Street would take half an access, 267th Street would take half an access, that is one access of the five. We now have Steels, we have Dennis's access, we have the Barn access right next to the Steels, we have the access to the Pump &amp; Pack, and we have the access to Wild Water West. That is a total of six already. With that, I asked Brenda if it would be considered an exception to have the access from Highway 17. And she said that there's always exceptions, and she would not discount that possible exception. Different possible plans have been given with questions, and questions have been brought up, but none to the satisfaction of the current residents. Were the residents on 268th Street just thrown a bone? We keep on getting different answers to different questions when they come up, and we're just not satisfied that we're actually being told the truth, that we feel that after all of this takes place, we're at their mercy, and, and that is not something we're willing to do. We do know, we are knowledgeable of the fact that a percolation test has been conducted, but no results have been shared. I have talked to the Environmental and Natural Resources Department to verify a test had been conducted. to verify a test had been completed or shared with the state, and none has been to this date. With the floodplain being a mile west from our area, the natural flow of the water from the property on the Lincoln County side of 268th Street goes to a drain culvert.
How do I get to that? Kevin, again? My pictures? I'm sorry. And then I wanna go down? One more, please. Oh, right there. Okay, and then I need one more back, please. Okay, that's fine.
Okay, so right now, this, I wanna say this area right here is where I live and Noah Hodak lives.
I'm sorry, where are you?
This area, right here. Can you see the?
You can see the cursor moving?
About halfway down the intersection.
I can't really see it. It's fine. I believe you. Okay, thank you.
This blue-lined area just below here, and the blue areas to the left for me are floodplain areas. So this floodplain area that is just south of me and on the Lincoln County side drains into a culvert that they have put in the middle of the farm field across from my house. It goes under the road and comes up right in this area and drains, as you can see, down into the Skunk Creek. There's a natural flow of water from the Bleecker's side on Lincoln County side that flows under the road and directly down to the Skunk Creek. So we have those two areas that go into Skunk Creek when there's flooding, heavy rains, or melting from the snow. You go over to this side where you have the floodplain, which is a lot larger, and when that drains, that drains into this field or this waterway right here, that is a bridge over the road, goes down, travels north, goes down to Skunk Creek, right past Wild Water West's side, and flows into there. That is a floodplain. When that water gets to where it's a pinch point too heavy, it backs up onto this back portion of the land directly south of Wild Water West. And that is why it stays in grassland. It is wet land. When and if the pinch point does finally release, there is a bridge that goes down and around and over to the other side of Highway 17 and collects into this field right here, this pasture that is not, you can't build in because that is the retention of the water until it is able to pass through the system. So we do have issues here with it being commercially zoned and the floodplains that do travel through that area. I also did research some facilities, and each facility stated a maximum capacity of their facility. I see nowhere where Amanda and Josh or the Barn Incorporated have shown what their max capacity is gonna be for their building. They have told us they're gonna have 45 parking spots with an additional 45 in the back area. It would be beneficial to find out what the capacity is. Right now, the capacity for the All Occasions and T is 400. But when I talked to them, they said that 400 is if you're shoulder-to-shoulder squishy-squishy. They said actually about 300 is probably about the best capacity for that facility. The hours of operations for the facility also are a bit concerning for us. However, they are pretty much the same as what All Occasions is. But with our area, we have family and and two individuals specifically, me being one of them, that has to be up and ready and going to work at 3:30 in the morning. I cannot have noise, cars, lights going by my place or anything like that at 12:00, 12:30 at night and be expected to get up at 3:30 and have a good night's sleep, quality sleep. In closing, you have two people who have requested and have been granted a change of zoning from agricultural land to commercial land by default that have had nothing to do with our neighborhood previous to this point. There are six family dwellings that have been here in varying stages of their family life for six to 80-plus years. Our dwellings will be renewing as we move on with our lives. Families will move in who want the same peace and quiet farm-setting lifestyle. Why is it so important to satisfy these people now versus the families who have been there for 25-plus years? With the commercial zoning, if it can be addressed, the reason there were no opponents in watching the videos is because we were not notified of it. And what I mean by notification, I understand, a sign may have been put up by the property, but it had been in the ditch the whole time, face down. The only way it was found is by a neighbor mowing their land, and they saw something shiny in the ditch. None of the neighbors, I travel that road to and from work every day. I never saw it. So, and when we looked at this sign this weekend, it was down in the ditch again, but what was left on the post was a zippy tie. Obviously, it is not understood what kind of winds we get out in our area. Trash, garbage, will travel. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Ms. Lehrer? Okay, thank you. Next person? Is there anybody else?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We are Darrell and Stacy Bleecker, and we're at 46575-268th Street, and we are the closest home to the project.
We live just south of the property, on the other side of the road. And I wrote this up.
Mr. Bleecker, could you stand closer to the microphone? Thank you.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
I wrote this up there last night, so I wouldn't kinda get run on. So if some of this is repetitive, I apologize. I'll just read the first paragraph, and I'll be done.
Okay.
My wife and I built a new home 10 years ago on my great-grandpa's farmstead. We have a nine-year-old daughter and an 11-year-old son, and they are the fifth generation to live on this land. My family has been on this land for around 120 years, and we are concerned that the noise and the other concerns from this project will force us to move our family, to move off our family's land. Thank you for your time.
All right. Any questions for Mr. and Mrs. Bleecker? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there somebody else?
Good morning.
Good morning. Ron Weber at 466-31 Prairie Drive, the Country Acres. I have a couple of concerns. I think some of them have been touched, blonde, so I'll keep it short. One is traffic on 268th Street. I guess I ask each of you, have you been on 268th Street lately? My second concern is enforcement. The enforcement of, I understand, one of the considerations was 12:30 in the evening? Well, if it's 12:31, who is going to enforce these considerations? If you call the Minnehaha County Sheriff, expect maybe 45 minutes, so now it's 1:30. Who's gonna enforce the speed limit on 268th? It's not getting enforced now. So we make a deal zoning on every corner. One is 10:30, but this one's 12:30. Is that what we do? We just go from corner to corner and make side deals? Why is it different on the north and the Minnehaha County compared to the southwest corner? So like I said, enforcement. I think that's part of your job, is enforcement. We can make all the deals and have all the considerations to get a planning and zoning permit, and after the ink is dry, who cares? Because it's not enforced. In our subdivision, we have things that should be enforced, but who doesn't? No one. So we have a lot of considerations when these planning and zoning projects go in. But who follows through? No one. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Are there any questions for Mr. Weber?
Madam Chair, if I, I just have to say, Mr. Weber, that you've been here very many times complaining about your neighbors. Wait a minute, it's my turn to talk. You've been here very many times complaining, and I promise you, our staff has been out there on those very many times when you've complained. And I don't like the idea that you are criticizing our staff. Go ahead, give me a shot, but don't say that about our staff. They are out there. You know, our sheriff's deputies are out there every day, every night, all day, all night. And our planning people are out there all the time taking care of complaints. And the squeaky wheels get grease, but it doesn't hurt help to squeak every single day, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Barst, let's let this subject lie.
I'm sorry.
Can we stick to the subject that we have?
Well, that's what I'm doing. Isn't this a public hearing?
Yep, you did. I just asked Mr. Barth. Excuse me, sir.
But going back, Jeff, to your comment, and that is, I have not seen him out there.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Is there someone else that wants to speak?
Hello, my name is Noah Hodak. I live at 46574-268th Street. I have one property separating me between the Barn Project. First, I wanna start off by saying I appreciate all of your public service. I know that you generally don't get recognized the way that you should. You have to make a lot of hard decisions, and this is one of them. One of the things that I wanna bring up is just, I would assume that if we're looking at an event-type of center, that in the zoning or in the, not zoning, but the conditional use agreement or the permitting, that we would look at what type of requirements would be associated with that. Would we add additional, or would you add additional requirements that, you know, any property or any kind of business like this within the city limits would have to abide by? Fire requirements, handicap requirements, things along that nature. I'm assuming that you're gonna make the right decision. That's why you get paid the big dollars anyways. I know that we've had great support, and we've had, all of our neighbors have come up, and we've talked about how we don't want this to happen. We don't want this to happen. Just to be clear, we do not want this to happen. We've lived out there, I've lived out there since 2010. I walk my dog along 268th Street. At times, it is very dangerous. And not just to my health, because it doesn't look like I walk all that often. But it is dangerous because of the traffic on 268th. And I will share with you, I would have been here at the zoning committee if I would have known. I've been at all of the rest of the meetings, and I would have been at the zoning committee. I took time off from work to come to this meeting. And I will tell you that there was no presence of a sign for the zoning that was visible, and I do walk my dog past that area. I also look at, is this right that we're even at this point in the committee, in the meeting? We've had, it's been denied once, and now it's being appealed. The original zoning was denied and appealed, and because nobody showed up, the zoning was approved. By definition, on Sioux Falls City's website, this is spot zoning. If you read Shape Places Sioux Falls, right off the webpage.
But we're not shaped places.
According to Sioux Falls, this would be spot zoning.
But we're not Sioux Falls, so that doesn't apply. Sorry.
My point is that I really am counting on the committee doing the right thing and looking at, do the desires of few outweigh the desires and the living conditions of the many? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hodak. Is there any questions? Is there someone else? I had nine people and eight people have spoken, so is that all? Okay. The proponents, you have an opportunity to rebuttal, and actually, you have about 40 minutes if you would want, or 35, if you have any rebuttal.
Yes, good morning. Kevin Nelson, 465-34-280th Street. I believe it was back in June, Amanda and I went around to all the homeowners that are joining the property there. Not everybody was home, and I did not speak with all of them. The ones that I did speak with, Amanda and I, when we were done talking with them, we said, "If there's any problems, please call Amanda." To this day, I don't think anybody has called Amanda. When they talk about, when the property was rezoned and you passed it, for the way everybody's sitting here, they talk. We can clearly see that, so somebody saw a sign. If it got knocked down in the wind or whatever, but somebody saw the sign. So, you know. I find it hard to believe nobody, if nobody saw, you know. I don't think there's any truth in that. You would've talked, they would've been here. One person stood up, you know, early and said something about the farming. I know they're talking with the farmer that farms it currently, and the excess land that they wouldn't be using, they would probably still be farming. Whether it's corn or whatever the farmers do, I don't know. But, you know, it's easy to get up and complain all the time. A lot of people live out there, yes. It's hard to be the new person on the block. We understand that, too. This is not a Sanford Event Center. It's a smaller scale, that's for sure. But for nobody to call at any point, and once it was rezoned, they purchased the land, now they come out and complain? Not cool. Not cool at all. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Do you have some more comments, Amanda? Oh, you have a question for Mr. Nelson? Okay. Mr. Killian.
Can you be more specific on how many people were contacted? How many, how many temps in what area? Did you go into the, to the housing area or?
Well, Amanda and I, we went along, well, it's 17 there. We.
Maybe you could bring up the, somebody bring up the.
Okay, Amanda, you can.
They don't know the map of, on the computer. Is there anybody that can work that computer?
Kevin can. Amanda, you can help.
Maybe you bring up that first map?
I guess as far as names, I wouldn't know the names of the people personally, you know.
You need to be at the mic.
You need to be at the mic, Amanda. Please.
I'm just kinda curious. I mean, did you talk to one or two people? Did you talk to a dozen?
So the first time that we went out, Kevin and I, before, sorry, can you hear me? Before that, before the zoning had started, which was in June, because we didn't wanna go through the process if we had neighbors that were, you know, completely against us. So, and we've been through this process before, so we know, you know, exactly how to do this right. Well, we tried. We really did try. So we talked to Jack, and Jack, I apologize. I'm not sure how to say your last name exactly, but Dominic, possibly, who is the triangle up at the top there, right along the property line. We talked to the Walters. We talked to Leanne. Kurt was home at the time, but he did not come out of the house. But, you know, she walked us around the property, and I believe quote almost that she said that, "You guys have enough to deal with, that I'm not going to go against you on this project." We did talk.
She's the one with the dogs?
The dogs, yep. We actually spent probably like 40 minutes at her house. We talked to Darrell Bleecker's father, and actually, we didn't see the other house back there. We would've, or, yeah, Dwayne Bleecker, who is across the road, the grandpa, his dad. He was fine with the project. We did talk to the Leers, who are on the other side, who spoke as well. And they didn't, you know, say anything. They had my name, my email. I gave them a project proposal, pictures. I tried to, you know, give them packets. And those are the people. Later on, I talked to the two landowners on the phone, and they were fine with it, concerned that they were afraid that their taxes were gonna rise. I said, "Call the county and ask if that's gonna affect..." I don't think their taxes are going to rise, and she actually wanted us, I think the letter was, you know, wrote from her. She actually wanted us to buy her land, which we said, "Actually, we would consider buying her land and her sister's land," if she wanted us to buy that land. And, so those are the people that we talked to right up front. I talked to Marjorie Olson, who owns the whole strip of land there. She's not here. She loved the idea. So, most of the neighbors actually liked the idea at first, so I'm not sure what happened, and they never did call, so it's a little disappointing.
So, it's hard to move forward if you don't hear.
Well, thank you, you answered my question.
Okay. Amanda, did your husband want to say anything?
Yeah, yep. I'll try to answer some of the questions. I kind of scribbled some notes, but I guess, I think I did address the land, or the noise and the traffic already. We, I mean, we are trying to, we're just doing a beer and wine license, and I know that we can always apply for a liquor license, but our hopes are not to do that, because we do think that the alcohol levels will increase that way, and we want it to be an upscale facility. So, I do believe that that will help with the, you know, drunk driving. We are going to strongly recommend to any people in the facility that they do provide safe rides, because that's very close to my heart. I've actually had family affected by that before. So, there's, I mean, there's things, there's things there that we can do that can try to help, but again, drunk driving is illegal, and we can't stop people from breaking the law, unfortunately. I do hope that, you know, maybe this facility will actually get more enforcement on that road. My guess is that if they know that the facility's there, and they're trying to catch people that are doing this, this would be a good spot to do that. So, I would think that maybe it would be patrolled a little bit more. We're willing to pay for any of the dust control. We've already agreed to that, and I think Josh can, I know there was a question about the township, and you can address that a little bit.
I'm not sure where they're quite getting their information from as far as the Dupree Township goes. I have been in contact with Alan Ripentrop from the Dupree Township. He's known about the project for the last three years. I guess that's all I can really say about that. And then, I know somebody was, I think it was Noah, talking about making sure everything was built up to codes with handicap access and everything. There's an architect going through the project. There'll be code analysis done, and everything's going to have to be brought up to code on the deal. It's not a remodel that's grandfathered in or anything, so everything will be brought up to specs. Also, there's concern about what type of a sewer system we'd be using, and we have had the PERC test done. It would not pass for a conventional septic system. The engineer did say that a mound system would be possible. I'm going to go ahead and just use underground tanks that are completely sealed tank. There's no type of a leaching from them or anything, and they have to be pumped by a professional crew. So, as far as any type of gray water getting into the, any of the water runoffs, it would be impossible.
I guess to add to that, too, I know that they were talking about drainage, too, and there is drainage in there, and we have talked to the Bleakers, and we did tell them that we're going to keep that same drainage. We might have to move it, but we're going to keep it. And actually, in the back, we found out that there's a drain tile that's broken that we are going to fix as well. So, that's actually a huge problem for that, that area there. So, I mean, we're going to fix that and make sure that that drainage stays in place. We have to, because we're right there. I mean, we're safe where we are, but we still just want to kind of create a little bit more space there for us.
Well, if we did change any of the flow and didn't move the culverts to a different direction, it would actually properly flow right into our building, so it's a mandatory that we do.
As the application with the DOT, we have filled out the application. We've been told verbally that probably is not going to happen, but we have filled it out. We do have a little bit more work to do before we actually submit that, because they do have quite a few requirements, and we have talked to, talked to them as well, so we're still working on that. A project like this, there's a lot of little pieces. We've been with architects, we've been with, you know, engineers, and, you know, we're really trying, but of course, we need to get it passed through this, and we've already, you know, spent, you know, lots of money doing some of this. So, we just have to be careful exactly what we do right up front, too, and make smart decisions. I don't know if there was anything else that I can say. 268th, I think I've said this before, has been identified as a road that does need to be paving. I don't know when that's going to happen. I tried to find, but it's, you know, it's right out there, and it says that it's one of the main roads that are, you know, hopefully, sometime next on the list. I mean, I really hope that traffic is going to go off at 17. That's what I would do, and when it comes, it's going to come in through 17 as well. There are two, I do have pictures, if you guys want to see, that there are, there are two very well-turning lanes, and there's lots, there's, you know, you can see, there's no obstructions to views turning onto Highway 17. It's actually a very, it's a very good corner to look, and I do have pictures if you want to see that, too.
Did you want to see the pictures? No, we're good, thank you.
Okay. We are commercial land already. I mean, if we don't do this commercial project, we're going to try to find another commercial pop project. It's probably not going to be farmland anymore. We're going to try to do something with this land. We purchased it at a commercial value, so we want to do, you know, something commercial with it. I really like this project. I think that this is the best one for this area. I think that this is going to be one that's going to piece the neighbors better than any other projects. But this is, this is our land now, and we are going to try to get projects through. I think that's about it. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Is there any questions for Amanda and Josh on this?
Okay.
Thank you. I don't think so. Thank you. We've listened to both proponents and opponents, so I would take it back to the commission now for either questions for anyone, or a motion. Sorry, was it writing Commissioner Bennigan?
No, that's okay. Kevin, can you tell me if in fact this property has any issues with the floodplain at all, or drainage-related issues?
This particular property does not have any floodplain located on it. As far as drainage, it definitely does look low, as you saw in the pictures. There's portions of it that aren't farmed, and I have no reason to believe that that's not because it's water. So, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Commissioner Kelly?
Kevin, could you tell us what, this is zone commercial, that's done. What uses are allowed, just not all of them, but examples of what uses could be allowed without a permit, without a CUP, and what uses can be allowed with a CUP?
There aren't all that many that can be allowed without a CUP. Retail is one of them, under, I think, 10,000 square feet of retail space. Once you get into the CUPs, there is a lot of different things you can do, from contractors' storage yards, to storage units, to that sort of thing. And, yeah, they're just, most things have some sort of permitting process, like a CUP.
So, without a CUP, I believe an indoor rec facility is one of the allowed without a conditional use permit? Is that correct?
Yes, I believe that is correct, and the indoor rec facility is something to the effect of designed for recreation, like sports and leisure-type recreation, for, is what a recreation facility is defined as.
And with a CUP, something like a gas station, C-store, car sales, those are allowed with a conditional use permit?
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Is there a motion? Commissioner Bennigan?
Well, I will make a motion to approve the project, and frankly, some of the offensive conversation that I've heard today is a little disappointing, and I don't, this is never an easy job, but to me, when you own the property, you have some rights that go with that property. And frankly, I remember some of these conversations all the way back to when Wildwater West was proposed, and when that was built, and I was involved in some of that. I had people in my office, the whole nine yards, and it's turned out to be a very positive part of the community. When I bought our house almost 40 years ago, I have never had control of who my neighbors are, never had control of the speed of the people that drive by my house, or the number of people. I don't have control of the, now, the trains that go by, and frankly, growth is inevitable. And if people can't understand that there's going to be change, they're going to have to buy more of the property around them to prevent that kind of thing. So, I'm not sure that they're going to like the change for a while, but change is going to continue. Growth is going to continue, and I'm very comfortable in suggesting that this is a better alternative to some of the things that I've heard that could be put onto that property. So, I'm going to make a motion to approve the CUP.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. I have a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit. Additional comments?
Just a question. Is that with the recommended conditions that we, that Kevin had read?
Good point. My suggestion would be, instead of just maintaining the one time per year, that it would be done as needed, rather than just suggesting that it's only one time a year, and I don't think that's a big issue, but it seems like they're very responsible people.
So, let's see, I'm looking for the numbers here.
And I'm sorry I didn't bring it up before, because I did write myself a number.
Application of, yeah, application, number seven is all applicable gravel driveways and parking areas shall have dust control products applied a minimum of, once a year. In addition, the portion of 268th Street between Highway, South Dakota Highway 17, and any other approved public driveways access to the facility shall have dust control applied a minimum of one year, and when needed.
As needed.
And as needed. Is that part of your motion, Commissioner Bennigan?
Yes, just like you said it.
And is it a second?
Yes.
Okay. So, add that to the conditions. Any other, Commissioner Barth?
I would just comment that we have had some good comments today, and that, you know, I would hope that the applicants continue to try to communicate with, with neighbors and, and work to alleviate concerns when possible, and, you know, it, it, a conversation where it's all one way or all the other way, isn't really a conversation. It's best to talk to each other, and it's amazing what can be worked out. I've been to many of these things where people are sitting with their arms folded, and, and by the end of the meeting, people are chatting, and it's not as bad as it seemed. I do appreciate the concerns of folks, and believe me, this is a common occurrence, whatever the planning and zoning issues, you know, whether it's a radio antenna, or a dog kennel, or even a barn.
Or jail.
We can put that wherever we want.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Is there any other comments?
I'd just like to say, too, that, I mean, these are very difficult, and I don't like change any better than anybody else, and I live in a gravel road outside of Sioux Falls, and, you know, I understand dust issues, and I understand how sound travels. But I do think that, I mean, it's very disappointing to me that there were conversations initially where there was support for the project, and that that is now changed. I don't, I feel like that's just really not fair to folks that then went ahead and purchased property at a commercial price. And I do think that they have a really nice plan for the property. It'll be a good use that really will fit well in the area in the sense that it's going to be limited, and it's going to be well landscaped, and, and they need to keep it a rural setting, because that's what they're selling to the people that want to use that event center. So, I am real hopeful, along with Commissioner Barth, that there can be ongoing conversations, and that, that the issues that have been brought up today, like any issues that are experienced during growth, can be addressed as needed, because it's ultimately in the best interest of everyone out there in that area.
Any other comments? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Item number 11 is authorize the county to sign a memorandum of understanding between Minnehaw County and the Concrete Materials Company to repair re-watering pipe buried under WH Lion's Fairgrounds, right, Robert Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson, County Commission Office. Earlier this summer, I think it was just a, maybe a week, or, may I take a moment?
Yeah. It's, it's pretty, I think we can hear you, Robert. It's pretty quiet.
A week or two before the Sioux Empire Fair this summer, I got a call from representatives of the Fair Association and Concrete Materials, requesting permission, or wanted to look into how we would go about, they might go about repairing a pipe that runs under Sioux Empire Fairground property from the, that's owned and had been maintained by, by Concrete Materials between the quarry on the west side, under the fairground property over to a, what's been called a de-watering pond on the, on the east side. And that spurred a little bit of a conversation between our office, Registered Deeds Office, and State Attorney's Office, because as we looked into it, there was really no record that, that this, this pipe had existed. There was no, there was no easement, there was nothing that we could go back and find and point to that was a record of this existing. And from, according to Concrete Materials, their, their information is that it was, may have been somewhat of a, an informal agreement back in the 60s or 70s that allowed this pipe to be installed. As you see in the memo, it is approximately 1,175 feet long and runs just south, 760 feet south of Madison Street, going east to west. And the, what brought it to, to an issue this time was that there was a blockage in that pipe, and it's located 175 feet west of the east entrance to that pipe. They, they want to get in, fix, fix that, that blockage, and, and repair the pipe. So, with, in, as that is a background, the, our office and the State Attorney's Office have prepared this MOU to allow access to come on to Fairgrounds property to excavate and investigate if this 175-foot location where they, they believe the blockage occurs, see if that is the only issue, fix it, or if there are other items that, or spaces where the pipe needs to be fixed, to, to assess that and then fix those areas as well. Again, our office, Registered Deeds Office, State Attorney's Office, Fair Association, and Concrete Materials have all been involved in this conversation up to this point, and I would stand by for questions, and I know we've got representatives of the other offices here, and if you have questions for any of us, we'd be happy to, to try and answer them.
Is there any questions for Robert on this? Or the State's Attorney, or anyone else? I don't have any questions. Is there a motion?
Move for approval?
Is there a second?
I have a second.
I have a motion.
I do have a question.
I have a motion and a second with, from, a question from Commissioner Kelly.
Does this provide for a permanent easement or anything like that?
No.
Is that, is that a problem that could come in the future if we don't address this? Things were done an awful lot different with the paragraph back in the 60s, and, you know, this is obvious, that this is one of the things that occurred. Should we have in place some agreement on that line?
It's my opinion that this just grants access to the property to make the repairs, that it doesn't grant any additional access at all. As far as I'm concerned, it is county property, period. So, if you'd like to revisit, or if you would like to...
There was a question, not a, not a proposal.
I just, to clarify this, I don't think this grants any additional rights to any other party, other than to a repair.
And I can, and I can tell you from the Commission Office perspective, there was a specific request that came to, to the Commission Office, and we, and we dealt with it as a, as a specific request that was, that we attempted to address in this MOU.
Okay. Any other questions for Robert? And I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 12 is a presentation of the Sioux Empire Fair Association's report on the 2015 Sioux Empire Fair. Scott Wick, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner, Scott Wick, Sioux Empire Fair. I had a great solution to the event center problem, but nobody asked.
Where were you when I needed?
With that, we will, we'll move on to our report. Yeah, we had the 76th Annual Sioux Empire Fair. We'll jump right into attendance, and, you know, let's, let's be honest, it wasn't hard to have an increase in attendance when last year, we had four and a half days of rain. But if you look back even into 2013, we're about 4% over that. So our attendance, our fair was very well attended. The attendance changed a little bit. It used to be the bulk was on the weekends and a little bit less during the week, but as we get into the report, and I show you some of the promotions we ran as a carnival, and as far as admission, you'll understand why that kinda changed a little bit. So attendance this year was 321,443, 14.5% increase over the previous year, but we do have to take into consideration the poor weather that did affect the 2014 fair. Once again, a bunch of new upgrades to the fair. We have the new livestock office, we asphalted the livestock road, we purchased additional livestock panels, there's a nice entrance to the front porch corporate tent area, we replaced overhead doors under the grandstand that go from the grandstand out into the main seating area. We put new overhead doors and service doors in the arts department. We had a rodeo arena custom-built by Sunderman Manufacturing that we'll be putting together. We'll have a permanent rodeo arena that will be outside on the grounds. And I understand, Dick, you attended your first rodeo?
Your bet.
All right, I'd like that.
Not my last.
Not your last, all right? I'd like to hear that. Incidentally, that rodeo has gotten very, very good reviews, been very well attended on Saturday, about a sellout crowd, and Sunday a little bit lighter, but Sunday usually is. But it is, gonna be a permanently sanctioned PRC show now, and we accomplish that in just three years of that. We, from fire treatment, we got a good used John Deere zero-turn lawnmower for some of the tighter areas, purchased a cheaper GMC truck for plowing, made many improvements to the water in the campground areas, new efficient lights in the armory office area. We moved our treasurer's office from what was the red shed, that log cabin-looking thing, moved that into the armory where it's closer, more secure, and we have security in there throughout the fair for the entertainment, so miles of using for both, and it's just better access to everything with the treasurer's office there. Obviously, the cement and center room, the expo, has been a big hit. We did a little remodeling in the expo. There's an office up on top in that north room, made that a little bit nicer, a little extra selling point for when people wanna come in, have an event, that we do have a little nicer office space up there now that has all your data and everything that you need to conduct business. And then in the picture, there's the beginnings of asphalt in the west parking lot by the expo building, and we hope to have that completely asphalted from the city within the next two years.
Wow.
Moving on to other contributions. Again, the businesses and the volunteered times and resources and the money is what keeps the fair going. We were very fortunate and blessed to have every day of the fair was sponsored by businesses this year. We have premiere weekend, which was sponsored by First Premier Bank, Premier Bank Card. That was Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Monday was BillionAuto.com Appreciation Day. Tuesday is Senior Citizen Appreciation Day, sponsored by Grand Falls Casino and Golf Resort. Wednesday was sponsored by Touchstone Energy Cooperative, which is Agriculture Appreciation Day. Thursday, the South Dakota Soybean Research and Commercial Council came on board, and their new campaign is Hungry for Truth, so they were on, they also helped offset some costs, bringing Lee Bryce in, because Lee Bryce was a much higher-end entertainer than would normally be in our wheelhouse for free concerts. Egg Rules Day is Friday and Saturday, they've been with us for a while, South Dakota Corn, and then the second year for CenturyLink with Family Fun Day. So that was nice to have all the days sponsored, and all the sponsors that were with us when we took over as volunteers in 2011 are still with us, and we continue to keep them as part of the family. Moving ahead, the promotions were very, very successful. Monday was BillionAuto.com Appreciation Day, all carnival rides were a dollar, free admission to the fair, and of course, free grandstand entertainment, where we had Dan and Shay with Old Dominion and Cam. So that, that's the largest attended day. And for, for us to be able to offer that and partner with Billion, I'm sure 60% of the people that were there that day were probably people that would normally wouldn't be able to afford to come to the fair and experience the rides, the food, and all that. Normally, we're $7 gated admission unless you're there before one, and then a one-day wristband is $35. So a family of five coming in for free gate and dollar rides saved hundreds of dollars, actually, by being there. So it was a huge promotion. The carnival does it in other markets, and we're gonna strive to continue to keep that going as well. Tuesday, we had Half Price Carnival Day, so $15 wristbands. Thursday, we had Cantastic Thursday. You got $10 off the purchase of a wristband as long as you donated three non-perishable food items, and we partnered with Feeding South Dakota on that, and there was about 2,870 pounds of food donated through that campaign.
That's great.
Expo building and vendors, we moved our 4H static exhibits down to the expo building to try and create some more traffic down there. 4H really, really enjoyed it, did bolster the traffic down there, coupled with some attractions that were down on the southern part of the property there. As far as vendors that were in there, we had 75 indoor vendor spaces were rented to 55 different vendors, and we also had Santa Claus in there again, and a character, character sketch artist that's in that picture. And then we had 59 different vendors that had 86 outdoor spaces, with, continued our wide selection of food. And with our food, we continue to, to monitor what they're selling, we approve their menus, and we approve each and every booth. One thing we changed this year is they couldn't have any handwritten signage, it all had to be professionally done to maintain a nice, clean look. One of the comments we keep getting is there's less food vendors. Well, there's, we, we cut back a few years ago by about six or eight vendors, just because, as I've said before, we don't need 35 people selling a corn dog. So we cut it down to the best six corn dogs we feel there are. Specialty booths can stay specialty and not have everybody selling the same thing, because you should come here to get the best of the best of food. You can't just go through a drive-thru and get every other day of the year. Fine Arts, we have a new Fine Arts, Fine Arts Building Supervisor, Wendy Sweeter, she's done a great job, it's year number two. The exhibits were up, we had 177 exhibitors with 1,408 exhibits, the highest number since 2010, and the largest increase was in photography. We had 134 in 2014, 305 in 2015. Fair financials, the expenses for 2015, grandstand was $539,000. Ground entertainment, we spent $56,888. Front porch, front porch, $20,850. Budweiser Beer Shed, $16,200. Premiums and prizes, $19,977. The other category, $74,000. Total expenses were $727,263. One thing to note is, the grandstand entertainment was significantly more expensive this year because the inventory wasn't there at the price points we usually go for. We had put offers in, but many of those up-and-coming artists or ones that have just hit a hit and are just getting hot in the last three, four years have latched on to tours. So they're going around with tours with bigger artists, which forced us to spend more money for those main stage acts. We tried to minimize as much as possible, but it was, you still had to invest to get the people there, get them through the gate, get them inside, and hopefully your per cap stayed the same on food and beverage while they were inside the grandstand, and it was, there just wasn't an option. It'd be dark, we have to have somebody in there every night. So those were the expenses. For entertainment, the rest of the expenses, again, entertainment, $727,000, administrative expenses, $111,000. Grounds admissions and vendors, $94,000. Advertising promotions, 86. Competitive exhibits and horse shows, $54,000. Concessions and beverage, 103. Arts Horticulture, FFA, $11,945. Total expenses of $1,189,412. We have all the revenue through the admissions campaigns miscellaneous, 470, almost 478,000. Carnival, 250,000. Competitive and exhibits, 141,000. Beverage concession, 200, almost 299,000. That one is significantly higher than last year, we hired beer hawkers, so we had people running into the stands and then concentrating on the crowds in front of the main stage, because what we've seen is when people get there for their favorite artist, for 100 deep, they will not move for two hours, they'll consume their one beverage, and they don't leave. So these guys went in amongst the crowd, and, yeah, they're there with us for a while, they do a great job. Sponsors, 148,000. Sponsors are up about 43%, and we're already about 25,000 ahead of that for next year, because we brought on a main stage sponsor and a five-year deal that we'll announce later on. Total revenue for this year's fair in 2015 was $1,316,567. For a grand total net profit of $127,155. It's always great to show a profit, we'd have liked to have more. Not as much as last year, one thing to consider from last year, we did have a $50,000 insurance check for rain-out insurance. So if you back that out, last year's would have been about 170, or roughly 130, so 40-ish difference, but we did, we did have about 100,000 more spent on entertainment for that main stage, because they forced our hand on the inventory that was available for those artists. So overall, we're very pleased with that. We just had one day of some rain, we had to stop the Lee Bryce concert halfway through, and everybody stuck around, I think even more gathered, and then when we started back up for the second half, everything went off without a hitch. But everything does hinge around the weather when you're an outdoor event. We literally got the call from Weather Service before that concert, they're like, Scott, you're fine, you're gonna be good for the rest of the night. 10 minutes later, he's telling me to tell people, in 20 minutes, take shelter. So I'm like, you already told me. But they said, hey, look at your, look at your radar on your phone, it started building out by Wall Lake, and we got everybody to cover right away, and Lee Bryce made a neat video about it, they were videotaping things and put it out on, put it out on Facebook and YouTube and all that. So it turned out to be a great night, everybody was safe. But when you have a great entertainer, it's hard for people to put their common sense hats on and stay where there's shelter. I mean, they ran in, anyway, just trying to communicate that, but overall, it turned out very well.
Good. Questions for Scott? Commissioner Barth?
Scott, do you have any idea how much in sales tax was remitted by the vendors and by yourself to the state from, from the fair?
Sales tax, we don't, I don't pay sales tax on any ticket sales or other different revenue streams.
How about the vendors?
But as far as the vendors go, they reported differently this year, and, and they, they used to go around and collect from every single vendor. This year, they, they collected from only temporary licensees. So I had 20 licensees that have permanent South Dakota sales tax certificates. So up to this point, due to the fact that the permanent ones, some pay monthly, some pay quarterly, some pay every six months, depending on how they do that. But I do know that from the temporary ones, we had exceeded last year's by a little bit, and that was 20 more locals that still had to. So there's definitely gonna be a significant increase, and we just wanted to make sure that that's reported correctly, because of, Pier keeps an eye on the Sioux Empire Fair, Sturgis and the State Fair, and I didn't want them thinking that we were down when we're not. So there's, there's 20 that, as soon as I find out that, there was a huge, they had huge increases. There were, there were vendors on Monday and Tuesday that had ran out of food already, they'd already bought all their food for the entire week. Monday was a crazy, crazy day. The carnival said, you know, they've played Wisconsin State Fair and other big state fairs they've had for 20, 30 years, and they said our midway was as busy as they'd ever seen it at other ones. But for a buck a ride, you know, why wouldn't it be?
Yeah. Any other questions? Mr. Kelly?
I didn't hear any numbers there, though. Have you got an idea of how much, there was, you're, you're just 4% over there, out there, right?
Oh, the, the, the sales tax collected on the temporary licenses was a little over $55,000.
And how much would you think it is on the permanents?
Oh...
Are they more?
No.
Are there more of them?
Well, there's, there's, there's 20 more they have to report, but I'd have to guess...
Maybe it's not fair to speculate. Maybe we should just wait until we have a number and just report back to that. It's not very fair to speculate publicly.
Yeah, I, it, when, when they're all, I probably won't know all those till the end of the year, depending on how, on their reporting schedule.
Okay. It would be interesting to know those numbers, though. Commissioner Kelly?
Second, do you have any long-term plans to get off of the subsidy that we provide to the fair and be totally self-sufficient?
Um, you know, I'd entertain that discussion, you know, later on. This is the fair report, this just encompasses 10 days of the year.
I understand.
Thank you, Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Barth?
I just, I'd like you to make sure that the media gets some of this information, and maybe Robert could help you send it out or whatever, but I think it's, it's a very nice report, and it's a happy report, let's get it out.
We, we sent out a lot of press releases, the, the attendance numbers have been out for over a week, and nobody's called or asked. I think they said one of the stations had a little blip on one of their, their websites, but, yes, we, we get it out there, and we entertain anybody that wants to come out and visit.
I'm gonna make a challenge to the Commissioners. This year, I entered two exhibits in the open class, and so I'm gonna, I'm gonna challenge all of you to try to do one. You can get out there and you can can, or you can take pictures, or you can take up sewing, or, there's lots of things you can do.
Maybe...
You could ride in the rodeo?
You could ride in the rodeo.
Dick Gerald and I are the Bull Riders.
I was, I was gone for most of the fair, but I was able to participate, at least be out there a little bit, and again, it was a great time, and I hope to be back out and volunteer in the future, so it was a good time. Thanks, Scott.
And on behalf of the staff and the board, we thank you for your continued support, and like I said, anytime you wanna stop out and visit about anything, my door is always open.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to item number 13, which is authorize the Equalization Office to purchase one Chevy Impala in the amount of $17,222 from Beck Motors in Pierce, South Dakota, from contract number 16865, and one Chevy Traverse in the amount of $25,807 from Billion Motors in Sioux Falls, South Dakota, from contract number 16866. Competitive bids by the state of South Dakota. Kyle, hi, Kyle.
Good morning, Commissioners. That was what I was gonna say.
Well...
Sorry about that. The reasoning for trying to get these early on is they're expecting 120 days before they can deliver. We did release two vehicles from our inventory, and they went to the...
Junkyard.
To the, yeah. I have to be careful there, because there was an exempt agency that took them both, and I wish them the best. You'll notice that it is slightly more than what was budgeted for 2016, and the reason for that is we identified a savings in next year's budget, in that the state just notified us that the schooling for all of the assessors that we have budgeted for will be in Sioux Falls.
Oh, wonderful.
So that in and of itself saves us about $4,000. We didn't know that, like I said, until a couple weeks ago.
Great.
So in looking at this, the Traverse is an all-wheel-drive vehicle. It is something we do need. It also will have the ability to haul around all of the assessors, and at any time, any other department needs it to take as many people as they want to a district meeting or anything like that. But we've identified the savings, and we do need these vehicles right now, we're too short.
Any questions for Kyle?
Would move for approval?
No motion, is there a second? A second. Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Kyle, it's gotta be a happy day for you, you've been asking for cars for years, and we keep saying, no, no, no.
I'm gonna replay this again, so, thank you, Commissioners, appreciate it.
Yeah. Item number 14 is authorize the Highway Department to purchase one GMC Yukon in the amount of $42,418 from Billion Automotive in Sioux Falls, South Dakota, from contract A175-5. Competitive bid by the state of South Dakota, D.J. Boothby.
Good morning, Commissioners, D.J. Boothby, Highway Superintendent. Same request as Kyle had. The contract that we're purchasing off of is a little bit different for the large SUV. The contract that we're purchasing off of is a little bit different for the large SUV. The contract price through the state of Minnesota happens to be a little bit less expensive. And the nice thing for us, more than the $322 savings, is Billions happened to have one of these vehicles in stock that they were able to move over to Sioux Falls. And so we don't have that waiting period of 10 to 12 weeks or whatever they were telling Kyle. And so hope to get your approval here. We're replacing one of our existing Yukons. Also had a couple of conversations with the commission office on Thursday or Friday about their potential use of the Yukon II and going to different meetings in Pierre and stuff like that. You guys are welcome to use the vehicle. It's a lot more comfortable than one of the mid-sized SUVs.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Are there any questions? Because I had one. Just, you made reference to here that there was high maintenance costs and there wasn't any maintenance thing attached to this. And I'm sorry, I would have called you, but I didn't read this till last night. So I'm just wondering what type of issues you were having with.
Our maintenance costs have risen over the last several years and we supplied a report the last time we had a request for this vehicle. And, and I didn't attach that. It's quite lengthy. The potential cost for maintenance, our mechanic staff have put together an estimate. It's nearly, nearly $5,000 of maintenance need for the vehicle. And includes tires, which for this vehicle, I think is about $1,100 or $1,000 alone. I don't know exactly what other maintenance items were on that report. I could definitely provide it.
No, that's okay.
As supplemental information.
Thank you. Motion is second. All those, oh, excuse me, Commissioner Kelly.
Following up on Cindy's question, does this comply with all the guidelines we set up for?
Yeah, it does, it does comply with the purchasing, purchasing policy. And that's what we were kind of waiting for is to reach 150,000 miles. It's got just over 151,000 miles right now. So now it is in full compliance with the purchasing policy.
Any idea what the resale is on this?
I just looked it up as we were sitting here and Kelly Blue Book listed between 12 and 13,000 for trade-in, 15,000 for private party.
Okay.
And we would probably have to do some maintenance to it in order to get that much money out of it. We haven't really identified exactly what we're going to be doing with it at this point. We have some more decisions to make in the department before we let go of the vehicle.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number 15 is a presentation of the Minnehaha County General Fund Financial Projections.
Good morning, commissioners. Carol Muller, Commissioned Administrative Officer and.
Bob Lutz from the Auditor's Office.
And you have a copy of this presentation already. I'm going to just put this up eventually if you follow along on the graphs, okay? One of the things that has, one of the things that has been happening this past year, this past few months, is that some of you have been going to the legislative summer studies that have been in Pierre. And during that time, at the last one in particular, the question came up of saying, well, how much money do you really need? How much, how much? So when we came back to the offices, the Auditor's Office spent a lot of time putting numbers together and we went through and, and they went through, to be honest about it, went through and made some projections. And maybe we can just kind of take you through just a little bit on there. To take you through on these assumptions, we assumed status quo. We assumed no new buildings, no new programs, no expansions, anything like that that happens. We really went back and looked and said, what's the past trend line and how can we go through and bring that forward? And keep in mind too, that this is really a cash number. It is not accrual on anything. So, because as we know, cash is king. So those are just some of the things that we went through and, and looked at. We, anything else you'd add, Bob?
I would just add that this is in today's dollars, of course. We have no way of knowing what the 100 bucks is going to look like 20 years from now. And in going through this here, you know, Kim was really the workhorse on this here and, but several times, we went back because we're doing what's called regression analysis. We look back in the past and try to project what it's going to be going forward. And several times, when you do that, you're always going to make some assumptions. And I would like you to know that, Kim, Darlene Johnson, Carrie Dever, Carol and myself, we went back to that, that idea, the assumptions, three different times and embedded things that we, that kind of stuck out, some anomalies that were on there. And so we're, we're confident that the graphs and stuff are very conservative and that they accurately reflect what will happen if the future and the status quo stays the way it is. And I'd also add that there's, there's no jail numbers in here or anything, you know, that's, that's getting built in the future. There's no new revenue streams that we've identified. It's just the way it is. And then the opt-out thing too, you know, in the out years, we've got some opt-outs that are going to fall off and we've, we've identified those numbers and so we've left that out of there too, under the assumption that, you know, the legislature may look at opt-outs or we, you know, might have something different going on in the future. We just felt it was best to let those drop off as well.
And since the general fund is really the workhorse of our funding here, this is focusing only on general funds. So you'll notice that we do not have building fund in here, we don't have grants and we don't have highway funding. So it is truly only the general fund that we're referencing on there. In order to pull this particular graph together, the Auditor's Office spent time going through and looking at that historical trend on, on salaries and benefits and new staffing and also looking at all those other departments. And you'll see the, the trend line that occurs as we look forward to 2033.
Want to talk about this one?
Yeah. We, we did separate the property tax from, and then we put everything else into other revenues. And as you can see, the three boogeymen that put us in trouble here a few years ago of Board of Prisoners, interest and, and the bank franchise numbers were the big effectors of our revenues going forward. And the other numbers are there, but they would indicate that although it's, it's fairly steady, it is on a downward trend in comparison to everything else as in the out years. Or it has been up until 2016. This is where we drew our assumptions from. This is, this is where we got the indication of the direction of the way things were going to go for other revenues only.
The third, the third graph is really looking at what's the future gap? What is the future gap? And when you look at this, the bottom line on there is going to be the other revenues that Bob just referenced. So you can see that they're somewhat steady, a little bit of a decrease that's out there. The green is projection on property taxes, not including the opt-out, but just the property taxes growth that's out there. The purple line has been the opt-outs that have been approved to date and recognizing that down the road, those continue to expire. The blue in there, I get your colors on the screen are a little bit different than what I guess I've got printed out, but the very top one is the gap. And that historically is what the commission has filled through, through opt-outs and cash applied.
Both, both of those blues combined would be your opt-outs and cash applied.
That's true. Yeah.
Can I ask a question on that, just to make sure I'm following this correctly? So if I'm looking at this and trying to track the colors, what you're projecting is that our existing opt-out will carry us almost to 2018 and then we'll have to look at doing something else to fill the gap.
Yeah. Okay. Correct. This last one, because the question always becomes, what kind of numbers are applied to that? When you look at next year's budget, 20.39% of the county tax bill on a homeowner's or on taxes will be opt-out. So 20.39%. By the time we project that out to 2033, now we're not assuming that that's going to be opt-outs, but we need to make some projections. In order for us to say, what is that gap, would be up to 29.22%, which is an increase of 8%.
So I guess, you know, you could say, well, we do a five-year kind of an outlook. Why do we need 20 years? And Gerald, this goes, I've heard you say several times, the county's headed for a train wreck. And this, this certainly verifies that we are heading for a train wreck, although I, I make it akin to something about driving your train in the sand. We're just slowly getting bogged down as we go out unless something does. And I think that the other point of this whole thing is on the 28th, the last meeting session for the special county funding meets out there. And we would like to get your blessing and maybe some of you to come along and, and present this material because Minnehaha's really never presented our numbers out there. We've given some, some general directions of the way we, we think things are going. But this definitely puts it, puts it into some colored graphs and things that people can easily identify. And so that was kind of the purpose of this here. You know, we want to incorporate some other numbers, you know, for buildings that are potential, but we're just not comfortable thinking that they're not ready to be incorporated into that yet. But when we do that, it'll be more of the same, I'm quite certain. So with that, we're open to questions, I guess.
And I think Auditor Lutz had made a comment last week, which I thought was very good, which said, this really goes to reinforce that, that fees, these different types of things are part of our funding. But as we look down the road, Band-Aids aren't enough. We need to really be challenging our state to look differently at how counties are funded.
Questions? Commissioner Benega.
If you were to redo that with the jail project and the general fund request or requirement to run that particular growth, how would that dramatically change this? As if I already didn't know.
Yeah. It'll have, it'll have an impact that's out there. We do not know the numbers and want to respect getting the correct numbers. And so eventually we'll be starting to put those numbers in too.
But that could be a 20% increase in property taxes or 25%?
Yeah. The capital cost is, I don't know what that, if, let's say the 45 million is the right number, what's the capital cost alone of funding that over 20 or 30 years?
Boy, Kim, would you want to, have you looked into that, Kim? Why don't you come on up here? She's the one to drill deep on that.
And I'm not here to debate whether we do it or don't do it, but I think you need to do cash flow analysis on frankly, what the need's going to be because I can already tell you that those graphs are going to dramatically change.
Well, you know, until yesterday, until you got it, you know, a real direction there, we were kind of, really didn't want to go.
But I think that's part of the analogy that has to be done because you can build it. It's not going to cost you a lot of money to build it, frankly, based on what we currently have for bonding-related issues. But the operating costs are going to make those lines go agit, stream.
I think that's a very accurate statement. Bob did request Doherty to run us some bond projections and they ran projections based on a 30-year amortization. Principal and interest on 45 million was going to be about 75 million on a 30-year amortization. Now, the projections that the architect presented in the jail presentation yesterday assumed a 20-year amortization. So I don't know what proportion of that 457 million is debt service. But you're right, the remaining costs are pretty astronomical associated with the operation.
That's why I asked the questions about the budget and got no answer, frankly.
We, we have made arrangements to obtain more background information, their assumptions, what the basis of their numbers was. And we'll be doing some further analysis of that as it becomes available so that we can translate it into a county-wide picture.
And if I remember right, in three years, our bonding payments drop $3 million?
They, they do drop down. So if we do what's called a, you know, where we're just paying the interest on the bond for a while, for the three years until things drop off, then our capacity for bonding increases greatly. Because right now, I think we're about at $38 million and then it, it drops down significantly too. So in three years, if we just pay an interest only, and I mean, if it's going to take three years to get built out and we're just paying the interest only, the tax effect to the, the property tax effect to property owners in Minnehaha County is not going to be that great. The real, the real rub comes from.
Operating.
The operating costs, you know, and let's just, I hate doing this because I don't know the number, but you know, the doubling, the operating cost has been out there. And if we throw that on top of there, you're going to have about 41% of your budget due to opt-outs at that time. Instead of the 29% we're predicting for 2033.
And please know that the purpose of today was really to talk about with the legislative summer study. Because we know that there's a lot more numbers that are going to be coming along and a lot more briefings that you'll be receiving as we have numbers develop and we're able to analyze them more.
I agree with you wholeheartedly, but I also think that planting the seed of what public safety costs are going to become as far as, as part of our general fund requirements is going to be culture shock to the people that are in Pierre, looking at the summer study issues now. Because at this point, the traffic that we're getting with that is limited at best. But when they look at the change in general fund requirements for that particular project, I'm going to say that your 41% projections are going to be at the very bottom of the And I'd bet you a lunch on that right now.
Well, I'd love to do lunch with you, Gerald.
Does that mean we're journeying?
You know, and I, you know, after yesterday, I was out in Pierre yesterday myself here and that's why I was not at the meeting, but you were in very capable hands from the Auditor's Office. We intend to put that together and we'd like to forward that to you. You know, and then if something doesn't, you know, by the 28th, I guess we'd like a blessing of the commission for somebody to go out there and present this commission, to present this information to that committee. And I would certainly be willing to go out. I think Carol will be willing to go out and if anybody else does, I, I just think, like you said, Gerald, it's important that they understand where we're heading. And it's, it's not, it's, it's very serious. It's not, it's not, it's not, nothing that a couple hundred thousand dollars is going to fix here, folks. It's, it's, it's really big, it's a big situation. We've got growth problems down here and the whole thing. I mean, but we incorporate the jail numbers and get them to you, you know, and we'll work with Mike on this here. I had a very good conversation with him in the hallway just now and I think we could probably move forward with some assumptions anyway for the jail numbers that would be safe to present in public.
Well, the only reason I'm bringing this up is I don't think going to that group right now has got their attention. But when you start talking about reality of what is going to happen at some point, their attention should be much brighter than what they'll see in this two-month window of time. Because down the road, that green space, if you will, is going to look like a pasture.
So this, next week, what day, Wednesday and Thursday, do we know? Wednesday and Thursday? Just Wednesday? And so Carol and Bob are going up? Is there any commissioners that can go up and testify? Commissioner Kelly is, and you don't have to make a commitment right now, but if you look at your calendars, see if it works for you to go up with them to testify. We have been, as a commission, up there twice and testified. I think it's been effective. We've been told that we've had some really great presentations. Carol did a great job of putting together PowerPoint the first time we went up. And I think we've given some very good testimony and I think this is the next step in, in testimony for us is to show them, this is where we're going and you're, they're talking about addressing fees. Fees are never going to take care of what, of what's coming.
I was just going to add that we have not seen the agenda out and I don't know if public testimony will be an option for us. So, but we would like to obviously have that option or else we'll communicate it in, in writing.
Okay.
And doing some follow-up on that. But I don't want to make the assumption that public testimony time will be available.
Well, if public testimony isn't time available, maybe we won't go. But Kelly?
Well, I think it's important too that we get this information because I, I had the feeling the committee's going to make some decisions on the 28th. This is their last meeting, I believe, unless they have one more before the session. So, you know, they've been gathering, but they haven't come up with any concrete stuff. So whether or not that's in the process now, this is something that probably should have been done for the whole state by the SDACC, but.
Yep. Commissioner Burr.
I think I really appreciate Commissioner Benega's suggestions on these projections. And I would offer some hope though, for example, when we, when we talk about invested interest, when I first started, interest rates were much higher and we were getting some money, you know, on the $25 million float that the Treasurer's Office would have. And I think now we have to almost pay the banks to take our money. And also the Board of Prisoners, you know, if we're back in a position where we can take. that the treasurer's office would have, and I think now we have to almost pay the banks to take our money. And also the board of prisoners, you know, if we're back in a position where we can take 80 outside prisoners, that also contributes to our revenue. And I don't imagine in any way that it would exceed the cost of what we're talking about, but in 2030, when Cindy's making decisions on this, she'll have that information.
Commissioner, I'd like to point out that that interest is a double-edged sword, because if the interest goes up on our investments, so does it go up on the bonds. And honestly, looking at our debt portfolio, I think this county has refunded just about everything that's going to make us some money going forward here, so. But if something comes up in the refunding department where it looks like it could be a good deal for the county, we'll certainly bring it forward.
One other question before the sheriff gets involved. Is this a 20- or 30-year recommendation for the bonding? The Bonding Council generally has a recommendation about the capital stuff. Have they said 20, 25, or 30, or have they not even talked about it?
In the first numbers that we got were for 20, but in subsequent conversations, looking at the money and the timeline, they tend to lean towards the 30, and that's a discussion worth having.
Yep.
So, and then the other thing that Mike and I were talking about in the hall, if the jail's full in 10 years, it'd make more sense to have a 10-year bond, but, you know, the philosophy behind having a 20- or 30-year bond is people at that time get to pay their fair share for that facility, so.
Sheriff?
I just wanted to touch on one item from yesterday, a shocking number, and that was the 20-year operational cost. And without having it in front of me to go into detail, I do want to advise you that we check today, because I, you know, it's like, wait a minute, I, we had these same discussions 17 years ago when we built the last jail, and that is that the greatest cost is clearly not the construction and the brick and mortar, but it is that operating cost, which has probably been, in a 10-year period, you know, $10 to $12 million per year, and so over a 20-year projection, that's a quarter of a billion dollars of our current facility. That's included in the number that you got yesterday. So I just wanted to clarify that it's not that and above what we have.
Additional, yep.
It's that, and actually, that is for staffing at a level to meet the 20-year projection of numbers of inmates. So it's, it was a substantial increase. In reality, if we opened a jail three years from today and we did not house other jurisdictions' inmates, and we had, you know, so those beds are built but not occupied, we would probably need about seven people. So it's not a huge jump on opening day, because we would be following our current trend line. So it is not a substantial increase on opening day. It is as you start to fill those beds, but as we've talked in the past, that's kind of your decision at some point, and that is, let's say we open, on opening day, have 125 beds vacant. Do we rent out 100 beds at $90 a day and take in $9,000 a day in revenue? And then what would it cost to open 90 beds? It would probably take two posts times 5.5 shift relief factor, so you're going to have a dozen new employees to staff that. So what's that cost versus $9,000 a day? And at some point, you make that decision if you want us to do that. But that's way down the road, but I just want to clarify that one point, as you're looking at long-range projections, that it included both all of our operations.
Commissioner Heiberg?
Yes.
I appreciate those comments, and I think really, you know, even Commissioner Benega's comments go back to the fact that we, now that we've given some direction, that we really need to start working hard on coming up with real-life best estimates, so we can understand the financial impact and how it's, how that impact grows over time. At least that's what I really feel like I need to move forward any further.
Absolutely, and I agree. And luckily, the person that did our estimating this time was spot-on with his last projection for our current facility, and we expect that he'll be spot-on again now. As you heard Judge Hoffman bring up, some ideas about things that may be able to occur to lessen that number some. However, keep in mind, all of those things that he brought up are not decisions or programs that a sheriff can implement, or in fact, that a county commission can just implement. They take UJS, they take legislation in some cases, they take the presiding circuit judge here and the chief justice to make changes in UJS. I can't develop a pretrial system and put people on pretrial. I don't have that authority. That's done through the courts. That's done by UJS. The mental health issue that you brought up, Commissioner Heiberg, the sheriff can't start a mental health facility and put people in there who are charged with violent crimes. If the mental illness board decides on alternative housing, and they come up with a program to do that, I'll do, I'll put people where, but I manage the jail, not the mental health. If there's a change in the mental health legislation or how we deal with them, I will accept and do whatever we need to do in that area and support those efforts. But I can't just go devise a new mental health unit, I can't just start a pretrial service. All these things that are being discussed, I can't determine site and release. I can make recommendations, I can sit on the boards that we've formed to do it, but I don't have the authority, as the sheriff, to say, okay, we're just going to ticket drunk drivers now and let them go in a cab. I can't do that. That's UJS. And so it's in the hands of the courts, it's in the hands of the legislature, and it's in the hands of the citizens, and I don't know if they'll buy into that. Some of those things, I think they'll say, no, we want these people to go to jail initially. And so I've heard a lot of promising things, we're working hard on a lot of promising things, but in reality, almost all of them, I have no authority to implement them.
Go ahead, Commissioner Benega.
Nobody's arguing with that process or that discussion of operation. The reason I think it's so important for us to have this display, if you will, or this graph, is for the same people who are making the decisions to understand that this is what's going to happen with public safety in Minnehaha County, and not only will we use it for the legislators, hopefully someday, when they look at this, and I hope it's next week, but I wouldn't bet lunch on that one, the real issue is, is that they need to see it, and frankly, the people who are paying the bill need to see it. And that's the taxpayers.
Commissioners, I will, you know, yesterday when I said, I don't work for you, I work with you, I was trying to, what I was trying to do is, I was trying to promote the fact that I'm elected, and I will answer to whether or not I think it's, we have to move forward with this. That's why I wanted to make that point, and I make it again, that I really believe, independently of your budgetary oversight, that we really need to move forward. However, I will say that it is funding. Funding is the issue. You have done your due diligence. You have worked hard. We have, as Commissioner Barra says, studied this in great detail. I think I toned that down a little bit, but it's been studied in great detail. If, my belief, if this was a city project, we would be almost done with the construction. And the only difference is, they have the money, and they're able to just do those things when they need to. If all of a sudden, the Sioux Falls water supply was overcapacity in their ability to handle the citizens, they would make the adjustments and make the constructions and do it, because they have that money and they're able to do it. Once they made a good case in front of the city, I think they would do it. I think we made a good case in front of you. You've been involved in that case. You don't have the money. And it's that chart, it's the funding available to counties that is keeping this project from moving forward, as it should. And it's frustrating, and I, I'm sympathetic to it. I've been, you know, living through these financial times and this issue for 17 years, and it's getting worse.
You maybe should go testify. Any other comments or questions? Okay. We will move on to the next item, number 16. Consider request for the county commission concurring an award of entry into agreement for the on-call jail blood draw services. Kirsten Kellner. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners. Speaking of county expenses for law enforcement, I bring this before you today to concur in an award for these on-call blood draw services at the Minnehaha County jails. You may recall when we asked for the RFP to be put out, and your blessing on that, kind of reviewed what went on with these on-call blood draw services. These are services that, for several reasons, in-house jail medical cannot provide for. This is kind of the aftermath we're left with in the wake of some Supreme Court decisions on warrants and blood collection in criminal cases. Nevertheless, we've received two bids on these on-call blood draw services, and while I was preparing this matter for your consideration today, one of the offerees actually withdrew their bid and said that they were unable to perform in accordance with their proposal, and that was the response from Premier Philbotomy Group. I entreat that withdrawal as effective. We're left with one responsible offer still in the running for this. It is our current provider, Test Point Medical. They have a contract with us through October 31st, and this proposed contract will start November 1st. Essentially, the terms are the same as we've been working on before, $120 per draw and court or other appearance. There is a cancellation fee in there if certain criteria apply, but generally, the rate is $120 per instance. Again, this is for services that all, when all agencies bring in a subject who is not cooperating with the collection of blood, this comes out of the state's attorney's office's budget, and the county offers for payment of these services, and they're necessary for successful prosecution of such cases. The model contract that I provided for you today, in my late-breaking attempt to get this contract before you today, I was notified of the withdrawal yesterday, the cancellation fee doesn't appear, I will have to edit that in, but that, besides that, the model contract is what our office is proposing. We'd ask that you vote in concurrence of the acceptance of the Test Point Medical proposal on this RFP, and allow the state's attorney's office to go forward with that today.
I'd move an acceptance of this proposal.
We can have a discussion on this?
We can. Can you have a motion, and we'll discuss it? Is there a second? Is there a second? Guys, for lack of a second. Oh, you wanted to second it?
I was going to second it for
Okay.
Purposes of discussion.
Your motion is second for purposes of discussion.
Okay.
Go ahead.
My question, Kirsten, is, that first paragraph, when you talk about non-county personnel electing to use the onsite on-call services, what, is this a change in, and I'm assuming non-county would be Langton County or State Highway Patrol, or what is it?
It's a City Sioux Falls, State Highway Patrol, City of Brandon, or the other agencies that utilize this.
And what, right now, this is for non-cooperative draws?
Correct. These are for people who do not consent to the voluntary withdrawal of blood.
And why is it changing? I mean, why are they doing more than they were? Is there...
I can't pinpoint exactly what the cause of this is, but I can tell you, there's the extreme increase in the utilization of our in-house people who are authorized to, or not authorized, but are willing to perform these draws at the Minnehaha County jail, rather than transporting folks to a local hospital. One thing that the local hospitals would do is if the person was not physically resisting, they would, or if there was a warrant, a successful warrant that was obtained for the withdrawal of blood, the hospitals would perform that if they were transported up there. As you can imagine, some agencies, rather than putting the person back in the car, driving them up there, on the off-chance that they will cooperate when they get to the hospital, might be electing to just use our in-house services to do that, rather than risk that transport time.
And do we charge for, are we charging those agencies for this blood draw or not? Is this all our cost? There's no revenue involved with it?
No. When the Supreme Court decision came down requiring this procedure, basically, our choice was to pick up the cost for this or jeopardize the prosecution of these cases. So we elected to do that. And that's why it's in the state's attorney's office's budget. It's a little peculiar, I would propose, but nevertheless, that's where it is.
Can't we pass the buck? Or we can't because of the Supreme Court ruling?
Without any agreement with the other agencies, this is a little above my pay grade. I think, I don't think that, without an agreement in place with the other agencies to bear some of these costs, I don't know if I could say, let's collect these unless, you know, except for county cases, I guess, for our sheriff's office cases. If you're interested in doing that, I'd probably recommend that a dialogue be started with the other agencies about whether they're willing to bear some of these investigatory costs.
It's worth a conversation.
I think that conversation needs to happen.
Yep. Any other comments? I have a motion and a second to approve this request. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 17, is it liaison reports? Are there any liaison reports? I just say this last week, that disproportionate minority group put together a conference, half a day conference, and it was excellent. I went to it, it was well worth my time. They had a national speaker came in. I wish there had been hundreds of people there to hear him, there were not. She did a great job of advertising, but yet, we just didn't have the crowds turning out. So they put on a great conference, and kudos to her for a good job, so. No other liaison reports? Is there any new business?
Madam Sheriff, I didn't bring this up during our earlier discussion, but I do live in, next, near a large event location. There are at least a dozen baseball fields a quarter mile south of me. Thousands of people are there playing games. I can read a book in my backyard by the lights that illuminate those baseball fields, and it's not bothering me at all.
I live three miles from that elevator, and it looks like a spaceship taking off, so it doesn't bother me at all.
It does look like a spaceship.
It's kind of interesting, yep. Any old business? One piece of old business?
Commissioners, you've had a very robust number of discussions this morning, and I won't take much of your time, but I want to say that after the commission meeting next Tuesday, AVI is going to come in and start installing the new video and audio system, so that they're going to take, I think they're planning to take most of the rest of next week, and we've told them that they get the room by noon next Tuesday. And again, I know this is something that has been a long time coming, but just wanted to let you know that installation begins next Tuesday after the commission meeting.
Commissioner Barra, I have to make sure that his hair is straight, because we'll have better video. All right, any other old business? Look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned. There was no executive session, I forgot.